SJC 11991, Maurice Picard v. Zoning Board of Appeals of Westminster, and another.
Bless you.
Good morning, Mr. Bavensi. When you get settled, you can get started, all right?
Yes, Your Honor. May please the Court Thomas Bavensi for the defendant in section 333, Inc. This is a matter of a zoning dispute with the review as limited to standing relative to the trial below in Superior Court. And frankly, the key issue from our perspective is, was there an infringement of the plaintiff's legal rights that was intended to be protected by some zoning, by the zoning act or by a zoning law?
Mr. Bavensi, can you point me in the record where does the actual language of the easement that goes to the beach lot or whatever?
Yes, Your Honor. So, in the appendix, Justice, on page A197...
Thank you.
There's a deed from a Henrietta Fredette, Inc., to a Colleen McFarland.
Got it.
And I think the third paragraph of the deed, of the body of the deed, is where the right is contained. And that indicates it's granting to the grantee, who would be the successor in this case. So, it's the right to use in common with others a certain area located on Lori Lane and designated as the beach area.
So, okay, let me just ask you that then. Is it, because there seems to be some difference between the way the trial judge looked at what the scope of the easement was and the way the appeals court did. And so, I'm just, does the language, does the beach area, that's, is that just a portion of the lot?
No, there's a subdivision...
Excuse me, just on that, to follow that up, because it seems to refer to a plan.
Yes, so there is...
Where is the plan? Is that in the record?
That's also in the record.
I mean, it strikes me that the Superior Court judge concluded that the easement was not for random use of anywhere on the beach lot, but just for access to the pond. Where does that come from?
Well, I think, I think the Superior Court, the trial judge made a determination that the right granted certain beach rights on this lot. And those rights were access to the pond and typical common sense of what would be typical with a beach. And I think the testimony of the plaintiff in the case, Mr. Picard, was that he had picnics there with his family over the years, and they also used it for other beach purposes, possibly cookouts.
But he, there was also, I take it, something about snowmobiling in the winter.
That might have been on the pond itself. So, once they come down onto the, so the beach area, and to answer Justice Link's question earlier, the actual lot is shown in appendix on a plan at A181. And that plan, which is part of the subdivision plan that was filed early on in the '70s, shows numbered lots as well as the locus or my client's lot, which is delineated as the beach area. And you'll notice if you look at that plan, it says beach area near the top of the, of the road. So, it's a delineation of a lot, but obviously keeping in mind that what is being granted is beach area that was testified to, and this was undisputed at the trial court...
Sorry, I can't, can you show, which, which one is it? I'm sorry.
My eyes, I think it's the appendix...
It's the third from the right, correct?
Third from the right. Yeah. Beach area, little words... It'll be directly below Ingram Ave.
Oh, yeah, I got it, I got it. Okay, I got it.
Tough to read. And I think the testimony in the case was that Ingram Ave is owned by the plaintiff in this case, at this time.
So, there's no issue of access to the beach area because it fronts on Lori Lane?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's undisputed that the, the uses that Mr. Picard and others in the neighborhood had availed themselves of this beach area in the past, the actual uses, were never going to be infringed by my client's proposal to have a house built on a portion of that beach area. And this beach area, as you can see from looking at the plan and the testimony below, was that it's a large lot, it's over three quarters of an acre, it's larger than most other lots in the area, it's heavily wooded near the top, there's a topography that leads it down, sloping down to the beach, which is a pond area. And the testimony that was adopted by, that was given by my client at the trial, that was adopted by the Superior Court, was that his usage of that would never infringe, impact, impair, or in any way alter whatsoever any of the neighborhood's uses of that area as a beach lot. So, the uses were not mutually exclusive. So, there could be a house located in park, a small house located on the top wooded section of the lot that my client owns, and that location and usage of that house would not be inconsistent with, nor hurt, or diminish in any capacity, any of the actual uses that have been dealt with that neighborhood in the past 20 or 30 years.
But was, was there any question that the path that one would have to take, that the Picards would have to take to go across this lot to get to the beach, that the location of the path itself might have to change?
Right, there was testimony to that, Justice, and it was adopted, and it was, it was indicated that the path could be relocated within the confines of that lot, as is generally allowed under an easement right, and that that would still provide adequate and safe access, even in enlarged access. And I think my client's testimony at the trial was, he intended to enlarge the beach area and actually make it larger. If you look at the lot itself, it has over 100 feet of beach frontage.
Did the Picards dispute the question of the relocation and the, and a loss of convenience that that relocation might affect upon them?
They did, and there was testimony to that. And I think that the testimony was on direct, it indicated, didn't think it was possible, Mr. Picard had testified to that. And I think on some inquiry from the court itself, it indicated, yes, it might be possible, it could be relocated to the side if that was done at my client's expense. And that was the testimony of my client, Mr. Normandin, at trial, that he was going to do that, and that was adopted by the court.
But why doesn't their, their argument that, look, any other location of the path would work an inconvenience to us, why doesn't that provide standing?
It doesn't because it's a, it's a private property right, and I think this is the key point in this case, it's one that the zoning act is not intended to address. So, it's one that really emanates from the restriction in and of itself.
So, what kind of action do you say he, Ms., well, Ms. Picard and now Mr. Picard should have brought?
Well, he can still bring it, it's a declaration of private property rights. So, to the extent that that's...
Art of judgment action?
He could bring it, if there was something that was happening, I think even the lower court indicated this, that there was no adjudication of his legal rights, his property rights. But if there was a trespass, if there was a nuisance, if there was something that was done, it would be like any other co-owner. You know, so the rights in property, whether they be an easement right, in the fee simple right, if there seems to be some conflict, I think a party would always have those rights to enforce that.
But you say access isn't something that was contemplated by the zoning ordinance, but I'm not so sure about that. I mean, the question of access and frontage is always, is oftentimes a major issue. What if, what if the path were going to be relocated over a cliff so that they would have to rappel down the cliff to get to the beach? Would they have, is that a non-standing problem?
What we're saying, Justice, is that the property rights that Mr. Picard has via this deed right or subdivision rights, those exist independent of any zoning dispute. And so, if they're, in this case, there was a dispute over whether there was going to be a house on this lot. And so, certainly, his easement rights are dictated by his easement language. And those, those can't be, those can't be altered in a way that materially impact him as a matter of law.
So, if the easement were, let's say, the path were moved and that created the problem Justice Spina pointed out, you would say that the, the purposes of the easement have essentially been undermined?
And that would, and he would have those rights...
Right, independently of the zoning.
Right, independent of zoning.
But let me, let me ask this question. Now, zoning is there in many respects to sort of protect the character of the neighborhood, right?
Yes.
I mean, that, that is an interest that's protected by the zoning laws. And, and here you have essentially a development with a common scheme, and the common scheme for the neighborhood, so to speak, is the use of this beach area for recreational purposes. So, why doesn't that fall within the scope of the zoning protections?
It doesn't because the zoning, and in this case, I'll speak to classic zoning examples, when you talk about dimensional requirements, the integrity of the neighborhood, or how a neighborhood should look relative to different uses, none of that was implicated in this case. So, none of the overcrowding density, lot size, lot restriction. The thing that's implicated in this case is a person's private property rights as granted by a deed, or by a scheme, or by a subdivision. And none of that, if a local board has to start sitting down and be discernment of different private property rights, it goes way outside the amateur zoning disputes.
So, you're saying these property rights, and let's, let's speak of them as collective rights?
Yes.
All right, because they're not just the plaintiff here, but everyone in that neighborhood has this easement.
Agreed.
So, those property rights still don't rise, those individual property rights still don't rise to the level of being within the zoning concern of the zoning laws?
Right, because the zoning laws were not enacted to protect those rights.
But if, but you would say that if Mr. Normandin, the house that he intends to build, there could be a zoning question from these neighbors if the house was too big or it was going to block light or something like that? That would be a zoning concern?
Yes, that could be.
But it's the fact that just trying to figure out what the easement means isn't?
Right, that, that could be if that caused some harm, discernible harm, something bigger than de minimis under the statutes.
Well, what, I mean, I guess, the thing I'm struggling with, and I think it's what all, what, the question is what all of us are struggling with, is what does this easement mean? The judge seems to interpret it as easement means essentially access to the beach, and that's essentially what you're interpreting it as. So, if you give them a perfectly good or even better beach, and a perfectly good path to the beach, your view is they've suffered no...
No, we would expand it a little bit more, and I think a fair reading of the trial court expands it a little bit more, Chief Justice, because it's, it's primarily access to the beach and then the use of the beach. But we would concede, and I think the lower court said that, also recreational uses. So, every use that Mr. Picard testified to at the trial was not disputed. So, if you want to have a picnic, recreational areas, and anything to do with, we think common sense, beach, the word is significant here. So, it has to do with things attended to the beach area, getting to the pond, utilizing the boating, and all of those things. I think there was a dock at one time.
So, the whole lot is not a beach?
We would say that, we would say that the whole, there was an easement on that whole lot. And so, we would say that the whole lot has rights as they've done it in the past, but that's not mutually exclusive. For example, if they, obviously, if there was a boathouse on that lot, they wouldn't mind that, the neighbors wouldn't. And there could be a house on that lot, because you have, that lot is larger than any other lot in the neighborhood, it's wooded, heavily wooded.
So, it would have to be on the part of it that's not a beach?
Yes, I think as a matter of law, you can't do anything with the usage, Mr. Norman couldn't do anything that would impair or impact or take away from those uses as they've been demonstrated in the past. And I think Mr. Picard testified that, too. They had a canoe, they would bring it down. The access road, whether it was like a little to the left or a little bit to the right, or Mr. Normandin thought would make more sense is actually to enlarge it, make it more passable, that was not a major part of it, because the access road could stay the same, there still was enough land there to have a house.
That land where he wants to put the house is where they had made recreational use?
Couldn't do it, we would agree with that. I mean, you can't do anything that would impinge the rights of all the families to the beach rights.
Testimony that that area was ever used by anyone for recreational...
Snowmobiles or something?
Well, snowmobiles, I think the snowmobiling must be on the pond. So, it's a 30,000 square foot area heavily wooded, and it's pretty steep. So, I think that they're talking about bringing the snowmobiles down to the, you know, this time of the year and utilizing the snowmobiles on the frozen surface of the pond.
Are you suggesting that if, if the plan was to build the house on the beach, that this would be a zoning question?
No, that would still be a private property question.
Okay.
Okay, so the private property question is someone has deeded rights.
It's got to be private property and within the sort of the protections of the...
Yeah, the ambit of, the concern of zoning. But those private property rights, you can't violate them, they, they always have their private property ability to enforce them, seek redress, or whatever it may be.
Okay, but not in connection with a proceeding like this?
But not a zoning dispute.
What you're saying is that, following up on Justice Cordy's question, what you're saying is that even if the, your client planned to build a house on the beach, where, precisely where recreational use has always been made of this land, still, it's not within the Zoning Board of Appeals ambit to do anything about that?
Correct, because that...
Be some other kind of land court or a Superior Court action?
Correct, because you're enforcing a private property right that doesn't, it's no setback requi, you know, there'd be no implication of the zoning laws per se.
But how would that not affect their right to common, use in common areas? You say that that doesn't matter.
No, I would say it would be a violation. I would concede that to build a house on the beach would be a violation.
It'd be a violation, the easement, you bring an action saying the easement essentially is...
Correct, Justice, correct.
So, the zoning board can say, we will approve the building of a house even though it may turn out to be in violation of the easement?
Well, the zoning board doesn't, anything that they give a permit to, they still have to comply with all other laws. Like, they're, they're not the authority in property ownership. So, when you go get a permit from the zoning board, you still have to comply with every other law. If the environmental laws have to comply with yourself to do that, if there's, if I have a view easement, and that may not implicate anything to do with zoning laws, they, they could pass, they could give approval to build something, that building of it could violate my private property view easement right. That's still not, not within the purview of the zoning boards.
So, you're saying they, they go to the building, or go to the zoning board with a plan, I guess, show, you know, a footprint of the house that they're going to put up, maybe the height, and, and the zoning board will say, yes, this complies with our zoning bylaw, end of story. And if, by the way, you, you know, this house somehow interferes with, with any other private property right, that has to be enforced in a, that has to be the subject of a separate civil action?
Correct, correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chief Justice and Justices of the Supreme Judicial Court. My name is Peter Campabasso. I appear on behalf of the appellant, Maurice Picard, who is the personal representative of the estate of Colleen Picard, who was the initial plaintiff in this matter. I think my focus this morning is twofold. Although I've argued in the brief that there are three reasons why standing exists here, I'd like to focus on the, the second and the third point. Essentially because there is a presumption, since the Picards do own property that is directly across the street from the lot in question, they are entitled to be a party in interest under the statute, and as such, they have a presumption of aggrievement.
Well, the judge acknowledged that, right?
Yes, the lower court did, yes, they did acknowledge it.
But found it was rebutted?
And that's, that's the first point I would like to get to, yes.
Let me ask you a procedural question on just that issue. This case went to trial.
Yes, it did.
Was there a motion to dismiss the, the plaintiff's action...
Yes, there was.
On grounds that they did not have a, have, have actual standing?
Yes, the, when the plaintiff rested in the lower court, the defendant did move for a directed verdict.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm talking about pre-trial.
No, there were no pre-trial motions to dismiss or for some rejudgment motions, no.
Okay, so this, this went right, went to the merits of the case?
Correct. So, for standing purposes with the presumption, the issue in this case is, in order to rebut the presumption, the defendant is required to produce some type of credible evidence that warrants a finding contrary to the presumption. And I would suggest, if you look at the record in this case, the testimony that was offered by the defendant was strictly based on Mr. Normandin's testimony, that he intended to build a residential home, and it was more focused on that he was not intending to interfere with any of the lot owner's rights to use the beach area.
But the judge credited that, I mean, affirmatively credited that testimony?
I think what the judge credited focused solely on the right of the residents to access Wyman Pond. And I think that's what needs to be distinguished for this court, primarily because I don't think the issue, what's being lost here, is the issue at trial was not Mr. Picard or any other resident's right to access Wyman Pond. The issue in controversy was the zone, was the building commissioner's determination that the beach area lot was entitled to the protection of 48 Section 6, in that the lot was grandfathered because of the zoning change that took place. So, I think for the lower court to strictly focus on Mr. Norman's testimony, which was basically, I won't stop access to the pond, especially if Mr. Picard wanted to bring his boat down to the pond, that's not what the issue in controversy was. So, I think for the lower court to strictly focus on that point flies against what the documentary evidence established at the hearing.
But there were two issues, right? There was a standing issue, and then there was a merits issue.
Correct.
And so, the crediting of Mr. Normandin's testimony about what he intended went to the standing issue, not the merits issue, right? I mean, the judge, on the merits issue, I don't know why he reached it, since he found that, that you didn't have standing, but on the merits issue, he decided in your favor.
I think on the merits issue, he did decide on the Section 40, 48, Section 6 matter, yes.
Why did he reach it, by the way? I don't understand why he reached it.
I think, in my reading of the lower court's decision, I think he went to the merits of the case, if you read one of the footnotes, and I can't recall the exact number off the top of my head, the lower court said, in the event that this case is appealed, and it is determined that the plaintiff has standing, I would prefer, since the case was before me, I'll decide the case on the merits.
So, even if, even if the judge said, okay, there is standing, and, and you get to the merits of the case, this was a 30A appeal? It was an administrative appeal?
No, this was an appeal under the zoning act. What happened, Your...
But, but when, to get to the merits of this case, the judge would have to adjudicate a private property interest, wouldn't he?
I would suggest that he would, yes.
So, why is that even relevant in this kind of a case?
Well, I think it's relevant from a standing perspective in that it establishes...
You get the standing.
Okay.
But on the merits, it's totally irrelevant to a zoning appeal.
The use of the private property right? Yes, I would agree, I would agree with that.
So, you lose on the merits? You have to lose on the merits?
No, I disagree with that, Your Honor, respectfully.
Tell me why.
I, I tell you why, because we have to look at this from a two standpoint. Standing is, is the jurisdictional requirement for the court to decide whether or not it even has the ability to decide the controversy.
But it's standing to raise issues under the zoning statute.
Correct, and that's what the issue was.
Private property?
The issue that was raised, under the, the issue that was raised was the building commissioner's determination that the lot was protected under the grandfather section of the zoning law.
Can I ask you, as a practical matter, just, if, if, if the, does the judge's decision on the merits, that is, that this wasn't grandfathered, right? I mean, this, yeah. Does it have any effect whatsoever because of the, of the, of the supermajority vote that was required by the Westminster?
Well, I think, if, if I may back up for a second, from a factual standpoint, the, the reason that this case presented was that the defendant requested a determination from the building inspector on the ability to pull a building permit. The building inspector's determination was that it was a lot that existed prior to the zoning change, and therefore was afforded the protection. When, clearly, what was demonstrated at the hearing was that the lot was brought into common ownership within a budding lot, and stayed in common ownership for a period greater than five years, and was then subsequently taken out of common ownership. So, clearly, the issue that was brought to the Zoning Board of Appeals was a zoning matter.
Whether it was a buildable lot?
Whether the building commissioner's determination that Section 6, 48, I'm sorry, chapter 48, Section 6, protected the beach area lot as a building lot, yes. That was the reason that Colleen Picard filed her appeal to the zoning board. The, the issue was not what was her right to use the beach area lot, it was based on the fact that Mr. Normandin was seeking an opinion from the building commissioner.
In your, your client's view, I take it is that it's not a buildable lot?
Correct, it is not a buildable lot. And I think that's what the judge ultimately decided, was the lot was not protected by Section 6 of Master and Our Laws 48.
But having decide, just taking what the judge did, if I understand correctly, having decided that your client didn't have standing to raise the issue, doesn't, put the appeals court to one side for a second, doesn't that mean that, that vote of the board stands and therefore Mr. Normandin can build?
I believe that would be the conclusion, yes. I believe that, I agree that would be the correct conclusion. If the lower court did, if the standing issue doesn't exist, then the, the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals would be in place, yes.
So, if your clients did not have a, an easement across this property, and they were simply abutters, and, and the question is whether or not it's a buildable lot, how do, how does, how does a plaintiff establish, or how does somebody rebut standing in those circumstances?
I think, I think that's a great question, Your Honor, thank you. And I think the court needs to view this as, the circumstances in this case present sort of a unique set of circumstances, because this is not a typical standing case where somebody is doing something on their parcel in the neighborhood that has some type, arguably has some type of effect on another lot in the area. This is more a case where the, in the line with the Bartoloni case and the American Ventures case, which I cite in my briefs, where standing was at issue, and the court held that the fact that someone has an easement or a property right in the subject premises is enough to confer standing for the purposes of the court hearing, the, the issue in controversy.
Now, the court below said that Picard claimed that his easement rights, which allow him to use the locus for access to Wyman Pond, will be harmed as a result of construction of a residence on his property, and that his own home will suffer a diminution in economic value as a consequence. Do you agree that you essentially argued below that, one, your access to the pond will be diminished, and, two, that your home will suffer a reduction in value? Are those the only two grounds you used to claim standing?
I think those were two of the grounds, yes, but I, I don't think that those were the exclusive grounds.
And what, what grounds apart from that did you claim entitled you to standing?
I think that the testimony that Mr. Picard offered was that his use of the beach area would be affected if, and one of the things that I think we have to take into account here is, there was no demonstrative evidence by Mr. Normandin, which established what type of house was going to be constructed, where it was going to be constructed, what other ancillary structures or, there was nothing in the record which really demonstrated how his use would impact the use of that lot. And as a result, the, the main argument that we presented to the lower court was, the, the documents that were admitted into evidence, the deeds, the plan itself, they show the beach area. There's no designated building envelopes on that lot, there's no dotted lines which create a right of way to get to the pond, there's no dotted line that says, this is the beach area. the beach area. Therefore, the argument in the lower court was, Mr. Picard has complete use of this entire beach area lot, it's a deed at beach right.
But that, so in other words, there is no other permitted use, you say, under the easement? You can't do anything on that land? Well, somebody pays taxes on that land, right? Do you pay taxes on that land?
No, I, my client does not pay taxes on that land.
So it's essentially a useless piece of land? Is that, you think that's what the grantor intended?
I think in, if you look in the record, one of the things that Mr. Picard testified to was to that very point, because when he, he and his wife purchased the land from the original subdivider, his understanding when he bought it was that was, in fact, what the beach area lot was intended for. It was for himself and the other owners of the lots in the subdivision to use the beach area lot exclusively for recreational purposes.
So then why wasn't it in common ownership? I mean.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, it sounds like it should have been in common ownership of the other people in the area, your client and the others. I mean, it, there, there's no use that an independent person can make of that land.
That is correct, and I think one of the other things that was established in the record, Your Honor, is the original conveyance of the beach area lot to the abutter, it was transferred for $1. And I think part of the testimony of Mr. Picard was that, at the time.
But that was, wasn't that a son, or, I mean, it was a family member, wasn't it?
Originally, the parents owned both lots.
Right.
And then they sold one lot to one son and the other, the beach area lot to a different son.
So is this not a, why is this not a buildable lot? Is it for, for the reasons you've just described, or is it because the lot doesn't conform to zoning requirements?
The lot does not conform to zoning requirements.
In what respects?
In the respect that, when the lot was originally created, the zoning bylaw in the town of Westminster had frontage and area requirements that were 100, I believe 120 feet and 20,000 square feet of land. The zoning bylaw subsequently changed to require 125 or 150 feet of frontage in a larger area, 50,000 square feet, so that when the lot came into common ownership, the lots combined, which were both non-conforming, created a conforming lot.
Okay.
And what ended up happening was, and this is a very important point, I know my time is up if, if I could finish, the Westminster zoning bylaw itself specifically prohibits a lot that has been brought into common ownership and into conformance from being subsequently conveyed out and brought into non-conformance. And I think that's an important point for this court to remember. So, and if I may just finish, it's, it's important to understand that standing exists to allow Mr. Picard to at least have the case heard by the court. His use of the easement should not be the sole focus. I think it's important to realize that the zoning bylaw and the protection of the, the zoning ordinance is important, because what the judge ultimately decided on the merits is significant because the lot is not protected by Section 6 of the zoning bylaw, and it is not a buildable lot in the sense that Mr. Normandin could not prove that the lot was in separate ownership throughout the conveyances. So I think that's a very important point. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.